Call the meeting director, roll call please. Here.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Galen?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
We have a forum.
Ladies and gentlemen in the audience, tonight's agenda is pretty extensive. We're going to be going into numerous executive sessions, plus we have a lot of stuff to do on the CFDs. It's going to be a lot of information to be put out. I would hope your indulgence as we proceed to our first-
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second. We have a motion and second adjourned from executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I'll make it-
Ladies and gentlemen, there was an air made. There was no place for public comment, put on the agenda. As a mayor, I'm going to put it on the agenda, which I have the legislative power to do. There are two hearings coming up later in the, or quite a few hearings, where the public's invited to speak mainly on the CFDs. We will have that in the public hearing if you want to speak on that, that is the place to do it, not in call to the public. Now is the time for call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individuals of council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion. I see no speaker cards, so at this time I'd open it up. Does anybody from the public have anything they'd like to say? Hearing none, I'll close. Call to the public.
Make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One Board.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and second adjourned to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District One Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Lisa?
Item 5A is a public hearing to receive public comment on the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One budget and for discussion approval/disapproval of resolution number MRCFD-1130-15, a resolution of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Penal County, Arizona, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2015-2016.
At this time, I'll open, ask the council if there's any questions. If they have, this time I will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the council on the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District One Board, please step forward. State your name and what community you live in, that's all we need.
My name is Bruce Finstermaker. I live at 3625 North Princeton Court in Anthem, Florence. We ever get a, Mr. Mayor, councilor, did we ever get a breakdown on what the charges are on this? I looked at the PUD, the Plan Unit Development for Anthem. It says that the town shall do all the maintenance of right-ofways. I've yet to see a town vehicle there. I don't know who contracted with the people that are doing the maintenance now. I asked just last week if, this last week, go Monday, is there a breakdown anywhere? Every meeting I've came, I've come to has the same thing. It just seems to throw it at us $2.55 per hundred, and then everybody agrees to it, there's no breakdown on what the expenses go to. If we're paying that much money for electricity for the lights, if we're paying for cleaning the streets, we pay for our own garbage, if we're paying for taking care of the asphalt, the asphalt in my district is fine, the asphalt in everybody else, especially Parkside, if it's let go any longer, it's going to deteriorate at extremely fast pace. If Polte wants to sell homes in that, more homes in that in Anthem, they've got to do something, have the town or have Polte resurface these streets. We pay for sidewalks, we pay for flood control, we pay for lights, almost everything in there we're paying for. So, and plus we're being taxed on this diversion dam road, plus diversion dam signals is coming out of our, out of the money that we have been taxed on. And that's what was said at the meeting last Monday. But it, I look at this every time, it goes the same thing. It's just automatically, I, 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 nothing is broken down, nothing's sold to the members of the public. I'm concerned again with the signs that the people in Anthem, the small, the developer puts up kiosks, it's got his name on them, our developer puts up banners, whatever they want, our little businesses in town here pay $45 a side for a shingle. Polte's got semis up, sitting all around town, they put up eight by eight signs. I've yet to find out from anybody, before I left on vacation, and when I talked to Jess this last week, show me where we've approved those signs. Nothing. The, I'm going to go to a workshop in Phoenix on the eighth of August to straighten out some of it, but, you know, I was told we have no code enforcement guy. That's ridiculous. We don't have, and so Jess says, yes, we do, and I said, well, ask Gilbert. He told me we don't. I said, I'll write up, I'll volunteer and I'll write up the code enforcement things. He said he doesn't have time to sign it. What the hell is that? You know, I'm on the planning and zoning, and it's supposed to be where we take a look at what's going on in town here, we help try to try and improve this town, and it seems like different people just sort of do what they want. And it's, it just can't continue like that. If it's true about the, we don't have any problem with Polte on a semi with their emblem on it, then we're going to have a Confederate flag on another one. Is that going to be really correct? And there's nothing to stop anybody from doing that, nothing. Maybe I should have taken a couple more weeks on vacation, but, but when I was on vacation, I was thinking about a lot of these things that were going on. I don't know why we're losing our city manager and stuff.
Excuse me, you're getting a little bit offline on the public hearing that's opening up for the CFD. Just to correct you on a couple things, we have no control over the flood district. That is not under the county control, I mean, the town of Florence's control. That flood dike is outside the town limits and is set up by a district board that taxes you on that.
This is the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One Board, which you guys are a member of.
But we're not, we're not the flood dike board. The flood dike is in a flood district. It's not, it's not us. That doesn't have anything to do with the town. We have to go along with what that, what that guy says.
Okay.
Now, as far as the breakdown on what's being spent, we can have that information available. I'll address Lisa and Wayne to bring up what we've spent out of Facility District, but I can guarantee you, we haven't raised the rates. Lisa, when's the last, did we ever raise the rates? I don't think we've ever raised the rates since the development started. Have we, to your knowledge?
They haven't been raised.
Not to my knowledge, but that's speaking off the top of my head. I would have to go back in and look at documents that I do not have with me tonight.
Yeah, and I don't think we have. And I've been here ever since we instituted them, except four years.
But that's an accounting, that's an accounting problem, or accounting trick. What I can do is, I can increase the value of your property, so you're still only paying $2.45 per hundred, but if your property is valued at $100,000 originally, now it's valued at $200,000, so then technically you're not raising our taxes, but you, you are by this-
We don't, we don't tax. We set levies, okay? The county sets the tax rate, not the town of Florence. Whatever your property is valued at, at our levy rate is what you're charged. We, Ick, our levy rate right now, townwide is $1.18, is that, $1.11.8?
You're in the CFDs right now, sir, so-
What's that?
You're talking about the CFDs right now, sir, and that is the next item. This first item is for the adoption of the budget.
Right.
The public hearing is on the adoption of the budget.
But the, just for his point of clarification, $1.11 is the primary tax. On top of that, in the CFD district, there's a $3.55 per $100 of net assessed value.
So it's $3.25 per 100, and then a maintenance levy of 30 cents per 100, so the total amount is $3.55 per 100, and that is item B, what we will handle next.
Right. And this, this says here, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2015-2016. Okay, it's Community Facilities District Number One, Penal County. It doesn't say anything about a flood control.
Right. I don't know where you come up with that.
You, that's what you said.
Well, no, you brought it up, that you have to pay for that.
No, I said, yes. I said, when, we pay that as an additional $3,500 besides this $3.55. How do you don't know that, that when you buy a house in Polte, that you pay an additional $3,500 to cover the streets so the town doesn't have to pay for that? Sidewalk that the town doesn't have to pay for, the curbing the town doesn't have to pay for, the lights or the electricity per month that the town doesn't have to pay for. That's $3,500. So when we're looking at, at this figure again at $2.00 or $3.55, it's coming out of our pocket.
I think as far as I know, Polte has to divulge that to you when you sign on to buy a house.
That's on the $3,500, so that is not on this additional thing. Could someone else up on the council sort of help explain this? Maybe I'm not making-
I, I will explain it to you. The $3.55, 30 cents of it is operations and maintenance of the district itself, which is a very small amount of money that's generated off that 30 cents. The $3.25 is to pay for your general obligation bonds for the regional improvements in the development area of CFD Number One or CFD Number Two. So that is, it's restricted only for debt service principal and interest to pay off those bonds.
Okay, then I'm paying $3,500 for-
Your local improvements. That is for what is in your actual unit.
If Mr. Johnson builds south of town here, then we should expect to have him, all the residents in his neighborhood or in his development should end up paying that same amount of money.
If he were to ask to have a Community Facilities District established, that would come at a later date with conditions attached to it, as to whatever he makes an agreement with the town of Florence. As of now, that is not applicable because he has not started building down there, and he has not asked for a Community Facilities District.
Okay, so then how do we get rid of our community district? If we want to be, if we want this to be Florence, let's be fair on this whole thing. We want this to be Florence because you're going to have a lot of people over in Anthem saying, these figures are being thrown, and they had no idea going on.
Whenever you purchase in your area, CFD Number One or CFD Number Two, it is disclosed into you exactly what you have to pay for. You need to read your disclosure documents.
I did, and that's the $3,500.
Well, actually, I'm going to just interject.
Yes.
Okay, so first, the $3,500 is the impact fee, and that's something that I always say-
That is not an impact fee.
Oh, not an impact.
The special, the SLID, am I correct?
The 30, the $3,500 that you're reading in the, in the deal is what you could pay upfront to pay your portion off.
Impact fee is how-
Didn't pay it off.
No, it's not an impact fee. It is a special assessment for the unit that you live in, for the local improvements that were put in. It has nothing to do with an impact fee.
Okay, what I'm saying is, that's the one I always say, if you don't pay it off right away, over the course of being financed with the town, it will cost the homeowner $25,000. Okay, but back, it will, if you do the math.
Well, I don't know about the math part of it terribly. The, the home buyer has the option.
That's not true.
What?
That is not a fact.
No, what I'm saying, I'm trying to explain that the $3,500, if you pay that off, then you don't have anything to the CFD at that point, correct?
That's exactly right. You do have to pay interest up to the call date, and you have to remember that. You're given the option of paying it off, you can pay it off at any time, or you can finance it out over 25 years, which many choose to do because the assessment goes with the property. If you were to sell that property, it would be a negotiation at the time of sale whether or not that you wanted to pay it off for the next buyer, or if they want to assume the debt.
Okay.
That's what an assessment is.
Well, and how much would it cost if you went the whole 25 years? Because I was told it was about $20,000, $25,000. I want to know, since I'm being told that I was wrong, I want clarification now.
Do we have any, uh-oh. You don't want to answer.
We don't know an answer?
I, I don't know if any of us know that answer at this time.
No, it just depends on how much you've paid, what the interest rate is, what it calculates out to. It's an individual thing, so we would have to calculate it.
But if they just paid the minimum, which is like one payment goes strictly to principal, one payment goes strictly to interest, so you're really only paying half of it a year, it's what it comes to.
And it could be somewhere around that, I'm not sure. Wayne, how much of the 30 cents does Public Works get?
Mayor Anken, Vice Mayor, basically, there's an O&M cost associated with, as Councilman Galen mentioned, there's a 30% O&M cost associated with the administration of the CFD. And with that O&M cost, a certain amount of it can be allocated to maintenance. So we get a portion of that 30 cents. The last time we had money in there was about two years ago on the Sunseas side, we had about $100,000. We spent about $86,000 on units four and six for the pavement preservation of those two units. We haven't spent anything on the parkside amount yet. I assume there's approximate amount available on the south side.
Okay. Wayne, did we put any other taxpayer money or HERF money into that project besides what the CFD money?
Only after the warranty period with, with Polte has ended, one year after acceptance of the facility, and we have accepted approximately 23 or 24 subdivisions in that area. After the one-year warranty period is over, we put HERF money in, such as the sweeper, any raised sidewalks, any cracks in the asphalt is basically done with HERF.
I, I live in Outlook or Overlook, but the hell, I live with it. My tract is the only one that's had that done. I have yet to see a city vehicle in there, except when the street sweeper comes through, a police officer comes through, or a house is caught on fire. He's talking about maintenance? I've got, my neighborhood is sealed, I've got cracks that are about three-quarter inch wide. I've driven all over the neighborhood and stuff. I know the parkside is worse. Who's doing the maintenance? Are we paying that red, those red vehicles? Is that our contract with them? I haven't seen any of our city employees in there doing any maintenance on the right-ofways. The PUD says the town shall do the right-ofways. If we made a contract with Polte for him to hire somebody, then that wasn't let out to bid. And there's, there's, what he's saying in regards to what the town has done, a street sweeper is going to cost what, $100,000?
Street sweeper, I'm going to correct you right there. Didn't cost you anything.
What? $3,500, this stuff, and now, now you're charging me, what we're talking about here is a CFD, MR, Merrill Ranch, CFD-130-15. Involves the $3.55, but $3,500, I understand. This other money, where is it going? Our, our city maintenance, you're doing stuff in our neighborhood? No.
Just, if I could reiterate, after the warranty period is ended, which is one year after acceptance, we maintain the streets. For example, let's take Hunt Highway. Recently, all that was cracked, sealed, and-
Anthem, is that Anthem, or is that?
Yes, that's Anthem, that is-
I own Hunt Highway? We had a, we had a laugh about this a couple weeks ago. If Arizona calls me up and say, go get a white-
Let's let Wayne answer the question before we interrupt anymore. Wayne, go ahead.
Hunt Highway is under construction and considered that way until about, as I recall, about December or August of last year. Polte was responsible for the entire maintenance. They did the pavement preservation, they did the crack sealing several times on Hunt Highway, they made repair to curb gutter and sideways. That portion of Hunt Highway between Franklin and the community parcel on the south side, which is around the bend that goes east on Hunt Highway. Within Anthem, we routinely repair sidewalks, curb gutter, and the asphalt, if it's past the one-year warranty period, we do that.
My sister-in-law lives over, and my brother live over in Expedition. On that sidewalk that you're maintaining, she tripped because it's sitting up about that far, so are you supposed to do it, or is Mr. Polte supposed to do?
It depends what units it in.
It's been over a year.
If it's, pardon?
It's been over a year. Anything over a year, because what we'll do is, we'll have all the people in Anthem make up a list so you can come over there. I'm again saying, I've never seen your vehicle, you're not maintaining the right-ofways, you haven't noticed the right-ofways because you would have taken down the banners and the signs that are legally put on the, on the public right-ofways. And Mr. Gilbert, I talked to him about that, and Mr. Bono knows about that also. So if you're sending out crews, I don't know how they're getting their lawnmowers around these things that are legally put there.
Yeah, and the landscaping within the right-ofway, that's maintained by the HOA or Polte, depending on when the warranty period is ended. And that has always occurred, and is currently going on because many of the traffic control devices, our signage are blocked by that, by that foliage, and what we have directed Polte to do is trim your trees, prune your trees, and they have, are in the process of taking care of that. Otherwise, we maintain the streets, we maintain the sidewalks. There's, there's quite a few miles, I think there's probably 46 miles of roadway up in the Anthem area, including the arterials and collectors. We don't monitor every panel in the sidewalk. We make sure when we accept it, it's within the half inch allowed by ADA on each sidewalk panel. After that, we don't send out an inspector every day because we're limited by resources, but if anybody calls, we take care of the problem.
I, Gilbert knows I volunteered to go out there, and Gilbert said, he doesn't have-
Okay, we're getting off of, we're, we're getting off of the dollar amount.
Mayor? This is what I request. I request that we review this stuff because, you know, when these CFDs come up, I know about the $3,500, but they're mixing $3,500 in with, with the CFD, the $3.55 that comes out of there. He's saying the town's maintaining these roads. I live there. I don't, the only ones I see is the commercial landscaping company in there that's maintaining that stuff in there. The, the street sweeper may come in there. I see the officers, which I'm really thankful for, I see the officers come in there, they visit and keep our place safe, but-
See, but those aren't paid for out of the CFD.
Right. And that's what I was told. Well, you have fire service and you have police service, and I said, yeah, but I said, I really wanted-
The building is paid for from CFD, but not the service. The service comes from taxes.
Lisa?
I would just like to remind everyone that during the public hearing process, what we like to do is receive input from the public on the item without really the question-response period. If council would like to, on a future date, set up a work session where we can sit on the floor and have all of these items present, we can bring amortization from Ernie Felice, we can have Wayne bring his work things, we can have the building inspectors present who do code enforcement, and we can sit around and talk about what it is that the town of Florence does. Tonight's public hearing, the first public hearing is on the budget, and the second public hearing is on the taxes. So that's what we're supposed to be sticking to, and we would love to have a work session and spend all the time talking on it, and if you wanted to provide us with a list, we can make sure that we have those items.
Why don't we keep that in consideration and have the work session in the Anthem area, so that more people can have access to us.
Mr. Mayor, it says here, public hearing to receive public comment on the Facilities District budget, discussion approval/disapproval of resolution in regards to the Community Facilities District. That's what I was explaining. I'm going over all these things. Some people, you're mentioning $3,500, I mentioned $3,500. That doesn't have anything to do with this. This is really starting to make a lot of people upset. I take the heat, which I, which I, I don't mind that much, I like to get involved, but it's, I'm trying to, to help you understand what I'm trying to say, and there's a, I apologize if I'm not doing that well, but-
You want, if I could, you'd want to know where that 30 cents that we're getting, no, from everybody-
The whole amount he asked for.
Well, the $3.55, we know that $3.20 goes back to Polte to pay off, or to pay off the bonds. 30 cents of that comes to the town for the maintenance. What you're asking is how much of that Facility District money, that 30%, goes into the pot, and how that money, that 30 cents, is spent.
I need to make a correction on that. That month, the $3.25 does not go to Polte.
Right.
It goes to the Community Facilities District Debt Service Fund.
Thank you. I'll, I'll sit down and you guys continue. That's what I wanted.
Thank you. So it doesn't go to Polte, and, and, but they're the ones that did the bonds?
Yes, they did, but now the Community Facilities Districts are political subdivisions of the town, and they are handled by the town. So that money is paid through the Community Facilities District to the bank to pay the debt service.
So it's paying the bond off and then-
Yes.
Is any other member of the public wish to, please come forward.
My name's Janet Ford. We live in Sun City Merrill Ranch. I think basically what we're trying to get to, or what the gentleman prior to this, is if you're increasing the percentage or the amount above the $2, or $3.55, what is that additional for? Is it just to, for the bond? Is it for some other type of information, any other expense that you're incurring?
We are not increasing it.
We're not increasing anything.
There's no increase in the $3.55. That's what you've paid since you bought your property.
Okay, so what's the emergency for the, is it just to vote on the budget, or were you trying to increase the budget?
Oh, no, we're not increasing the budget on that, on that portion of it. All we have to do is, we got guidelines that we have to stay in place in order to get the budget passed first week in August, Lisa, or last week of this month?
It's just a timing issue, which is why we have to state emergency.
Okay, I think that's probably why everybody was concerned, because it did say emergency, and people thought that it was an increase to what we already had.
Nothing's being increased.
Okay, thank you.
I will say, because I have had a few questions come up, and one of the parts of the increase that has been brought up in the past is the assessments of the houses have gone up, so they've said that comes from the county assessor's office. When they, when they assess the homes, the overall price of the homes have risen, so they're saying, why are we keeping the rate at $3.55 per $100 of net assessed home value? Can't we continue and adjust and make those modifications so this way the same amount is going out? I also have two other questions, but answer that first.
Addressing that, I want Becky to address that because-
Let me tell you, whenever- Uh, let me tell you, whenever, whenever they do these amortization schedules and they do the bonding, they prepare out projections on what's going to be needed based upon the assessed value for the debt service itself. So those are prepared by bond, by the bonding company, and we go by those schedules. We try to keep that levy at $3.55, and that's, that's what it's set at, it has not changed this whole time. So even though the property values have increased, that's also included in those projections that are prepared for us. The town does not prepare that, our bonding company prepares those.
But in the, in the past, I understand that, I'm going to ask two more questions. The CFD, the debt service fund, because I've asked questions before specifically, where is all the money going to? Because when we're looking at, you know, the inter-fund transfers here and there, what specific projects is the CFD funding? What specific projects have they funded? Um, let's- And including all of them?
Kara, and I, and if I could, I think we're getting off of the budget portion here, and we're starting to question about the past payments and everything.
But the budget should include what projects are and were funded, and we're not getting that full information in front of us. The, the Community Facility District is a very different animal than a Town of Florence budget, so I do want to remind you that. And I would also like to remind you that before anything is bonded on, or we spend money on a project, it goes through a feasibility report, that report comes to council, council adopts that report, and then after that, we move forward with the- Mike, would you like to step in?
That's what, after you get through, why don't we have Mike Cofiso, who is our bond attorney, him and his gray beard, kind of explain exactly what's going on?
Gotta push the button. There you go.
Mayor, members of the council, Michael Cofiso with the law firm of Greenberg Charig. Uh, the, the mayor is correct, my firm formed both these districts back in 2005 or '06, I think it was. Um, and, and the, Ms. Gleene has given you a, a bunch of information, that's obviously correct information, let me, let me make sure there's a couple of things that are clear. The 30 cents is only for maintenance and operation of the district and its infrastructure. It, it includes amounts to pay the administrative costs the district incurs, because we don't want the town's general fund subsidizing the Community Facilities Districts. These districts are separate political subdivisions from the, from the town. They, the town shouldn't be paying expenses of the districts. It would be like the town paying expenses of the school district or the county, that can't happen and shouldn't happen, so some of the money is used to pay associated administrative expenses of the district. The, the other amount goes to pay operation and maintenance costs of certain district infrastructure. Remember, we're not talking about a lot of money here in terms of district budgets. If you look this year, the amount is $47,000, I think. So, as you guys know, $47,000 doesn't go very far in terms of doing maintenance of sidewalk, streets, landscaping, or anything else. So I think, just in context of 30 cents, we need to think about that. The reason for that is partially what you've been discussing. Remember, this, these districts, even though they were started in 2005, '06, are still in their infancy, there's not a lot of value out there. You're correct, the assessed valuations of the properties have been increasing, but there's still not a lot of value out there. When you apply the assessment ratios against the value of the property and then apply the 30 cents, you're collecting $40,000 a year. Again, that's not a lot of money. Um, the, when you talk about the rest of the tax levy, the $3.25 that's left after you take out the 30 cents, the $3.25 is used to pay debt service on bonds that have been issued since the inception of the district. A bond is nothing, nothing more, as you all know, than a borrowing, and basically, the $3.55 goes to pay principal and interest on bonds that have already been issued and have been used to finance projects that are already in place. So there are no new projects being done. The debt service that's raised through the $3.55 is to pay debt service for bonds that were issued, that, for projects that have already been built. So, there, there are lists of those projects available, they include major roadways, um, you know, a lot of other projects that were done as part of the initial financings for the district, but, but there aren't new projects every year that total that dollar amount. The $3.25 is debt service, principal and interest. During early years, just like your home mortgage, it's mostly interest. The interest rates are not high interest rates, we're talking about 5 to 6% interest rates on the, on the bond, so, but again, the $3.55 is applied against fairly low values, because again, there's just not a lot of assessed value out there. As the value grows, um, there will be more that will be produced, but right now, there's, that's not a lot of produ- a lot of amount produced because there's not a lot of value out there.
Let me go back to Wayne. Wayne, you mentioned there's about 43 miles of paved road in the area, in the districts.
That's correct.
How many of those roads have been, how many of those miles of roads have been accepted by the town?
How many miles is what, sir?
Have been accepted by the town?
Probably, um, 35 have been accepted by the town, that's all the, uh, major arterios have been accepted, with the exception of Felix, Merrill Ranch Parkway have been accepted, Sun City, uh, Hunt Highway have been accepted, and, um, all the residential streets on accepted streets where the warranty has ended have been accepted by the town.
Now, what it amounts to is eventually we're going to have to go out there and repave those roads, which is going to be reseal them or whatever.
That's correct.
And that money will not come from the Community Facilities District, because it'll be out, more likely it's going to take more than what the Community Facility District will raise.
That's correct, it's based on need, if they have a raised sidewalk, if there's crack sealing that needs to be done, it comes out of herfa, unless we can identify a pavement preservation project.
So I think that what we're saying and what I'm hearing here is somebody would like accountability of the amount of monies from the CFD that go to put this to what you put into it. Maybe you need to take a look at some way of tracking that money.
Yes, we can, uh, cost, cost account it via a, uh, work breakdown structure without any problem.
I think the other concern, Mr. Mayor, is that, uh, our streets need maintenance, and, and we're not getting that maintenance.
Uh, what's that, John?
I say, "Our streets need maintenance in Anthem, and we're not getting maintenance on our streets."
Do we have projects slated for Anthem this year? On resurfacing, or any that you're aware of?
I am not aware of it, uh, because of the way the budget is, I'm not, uh, familiar with all the detailed projects associated with the CIPs.
That'll be something that we'll be working on, I guarantee you.
I think Lisa's idea to do a work session will solve a lot of these issues, because I don't think we're going to resolve anything tonight, because we don't have the information in front of us. So I think it's best that we can pull a work session together, and that will give us an opportunity to pull that information together, so that the public will be informed and will have, be knowledgeable about what is going on, so they can get the details, because I think we're just going in circles right now at this point.
And actually, to piggyback, that's what I had originally asked for at the last meeting, along with a breakdown of all the expenditures, revenues coming in, and then we, we're planned with an executive session tonight to go over the documents of the CFDs. I would have rather had a work session in the public, so everybody can see what is going on for transparency.
The executive session tonight is for, um, legal advice on a CFD contract.
Okay, so we've directed staff to put a work session together, I think that'll take care of it.
Is there any more comment on the budget for Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn from the public, uh, from the-
No, 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 we've got the, uh, we need a action on two.
To approve resolution number MRCFD 1, 130-dash-15.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution MRCFD 1, 130-dash-15. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Item B, public hearing to receive public comment on Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One Property Tax Levy, and second reading of ordinance number MRCFD 1, 11215, and ordinance of the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of property within the Community Facilities District, subject to the taxation of a certain sum upon each 100 of the valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to receive from the funds for Community Facility District expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2016, and declaring an emergency. First reading was held on June 6, 2015. This is only a second reading, this item will be up here before you again on the 27th of July for action.
And again, this is a public hearing for all those that would like to comment on the property tax levy. Does any member of the council have anything you want to say before we get into it? Okay, this time I open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public have anything they'd like to say on the levy? Hearing none, seeing no movement, I'll close the public hearing, that, just a public hearing, there will be action taken on it on the 30th of June.
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn from, um, Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Board, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, Board, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Does any member of the council have any questions, or Mike or Lisa reference this, as we pretty well discussed, uh, in 5A, but if anybody else has any other question?
For the purpose of public, I would like Mike, since he's here tonight, to go over, um, the difference between the GO bonds and the special assessment, assessment lien bonds, please.
Uh, yes, Mayor, members of the council, um, the, the, there are two types of bonds that each of these districts has outstanding, we'll talk about district number two, since that's the, uh, that's the meeting we're currently in. Um, general obligation bonds are bonds that are payable from an unlimited property tax levied on all property within the boundaries of the district. And so, so what that means is that, um, there's a, a levy based on the value of the property from year to year adequate to pay interest and principal on the bonds. Um, and those bonds are very much like the school district bonds that are issued by the local school district, by the county when it issues general obligation bonds, and the town if it had any bonds outstanding. Um, there are also assessment bonds, uh, on each of the lots within the, the, not each of the lots, but in certain lots within the boundaries of the district. Assessment bonds, unlike GO bonds, are not, uh, are not collateralized by all the property within the boundaries of the district with an unlimited property tax. Each lot receives an assessment based on the benefit that rural lot receives, in the case of Merrill Ranch, it's $3,000 per lot, unlike property taxes, which as you know, you can't go down to the county and pay off in full anytime you want, an assessment can be prepaid anytime in full, and that lien for the, for future assessment payment, payments goes away. The $3,000 is amortized, again, just like a mortgage would be, um, I heard a number earlier of 25,000, I'm not sure where that number came from, if you do a quick on the back of the envelope calculation, it, it's more like 14,000 if you add it up for the full 25 years, which is not really the correct way to do it, you'd want to present value the number back to today's, today's number. So, the, the real distinction between general obligation bonds and, and assessment bonds is that general obligation bonds are the responsibility of all property owners within the boundaries of the district jointly and severally. So if, if the mayor doesn't pay his property taxes and I do, um, in future years, I'm going to have to pay more property taxes till we can collect more property taxes from the mayor, as a result of foreclosure, bankruptcy, whatever we need to do. In the context of an assessment bond, I'm only responsible for this, for the debt service due on my property. So the fact that the mayor's not paying his assessment payments doesn't affect my payments in future years. Uh, as has been mentioned several times, um, there are agreements, uh, in place with regard to this district, and without speaking to win, one, because we're not in that meeting right now, but there are contracts, um, that relate to both, uh, what the bond proceeds for each type of bonds are, are used for, how the bonds are supposed to be issued, the process through which we, we go through to issue the bonds. For each of these bond issues, both assessment bonds and, uh, general obligation bonds, as , um, the, the assistant manager mentioned, there are feasibility reports on file, and all those things are available in the, uh, in the city's offices, so that you can always go see both, uh, the feasibility reports, and also for each assessment area, there are assessment documents available, so you can see the proceedings for those assessments.
Thank you for using me as an example, but I do pay my taxes.
I'm sure you did, that's why I used you.
You got any other, Kara?
No, I just wanted the clarification.
Okay, at this time I'll open the public hearing, anybody from the public like to speak? That has nothing to do with this hearing, ma'am. Ken, or Dan?
Mayor, we'd just like to specify for the meeting that it is a public hearing to receive public comment on the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two Budget.
I'm going to close the public hearing now.
Thank you, sir.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number MRCFD 2, 228-dash-15.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number MRCFD 2, 228-dash-15. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. You know what, just, just be careful, let's go and do a roll call.
Okay. It should be like that on both of them.
Board member-
Did one know?
There was two before.
Well, we're going to do it on this one.
Board member Woolridge?
Aye.
Board member Hawkins?
Oh, aye, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Board member Gleene?
Yes.
Board member Anderson?
Nay.
Board member Wall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Nay.
Mayor Rankin?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Chair Rankin. Motion carries.
Okay, now we're going to go to 7B.
7B, public hearing to receive public comment on Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two Property Tax Levy, and second reading of ordinance number MRCFD 2, 21215, and ordinance of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Community Facilities District, subject to the taxation of certain sum upon $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to receive the funds for the Community Facility District expenses for the fiscal year ending in the 30th day of June 2016, and declaring emergency. The first reading was held on June 6, 2015, this will be the second reading, and again, this item as well as the other item will be at the Monday, July 27th, meeting for action.
Does any member of the council have any question, Lisa? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing, um, uh, Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two Property Tax Levy. Does any member of the council, or the audience, have anything they'd like to say or ask? Seeing no movement, I'll close the public hearing.
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, Board, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item nine, new business, 9A, public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the property tax levy of the Town of Florence, and a second reading of ordinance number 630-dash-15, and ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Town of Florence, subject to the taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to receive from funds for general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2016, and declaring an emergency. First hearing, first reading was held June 6, 2015, um, this will be the second reading, after the mayor opens the public hearing, we will ask for a roll call, I'm sorry, July 6, 2015, second reading is tonight, and we will ask for them, for a, um, motion to consider the tax levy increase on the July 27, 2015 meeting, and we will be taking a roll call at that time.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like to ask, Lisa?
Not ask, but a statement. I just want to make some clarification for public information, that this is the primary property tax that all taxpayers in the Town of Florence pay, whereas the prior CFDs- whereas the prior CFDs encompassed a secondary property tax that only those in the CFD pay in addition to this primary tax.
Okay, this time I open the public hearing. All I can say is, I wanna talk on this because Becky down there, she's been after me for years to try to raise it. Now she sits up around the council that has to set it. Staff would like to raise it. I think it's been said before. Not to say anything that's out of line. I've tried to keep that property tax down as low as we can, the levy, not the tax, the levy. Go around and take a look at Pinal County. Take a look at most places in Arizona. You're gonna have a hard time finding a place where the levy is, is low as what it is in Florence, Arizona. We take a look at what we're doing tonight and we take a look at one point, one, one, eight, two. How much is that anticipated, the revenue bringing in? Lisa, what is our anticipated revenue bringing in off, off our property tax?
I will defer that to the finance department. Or if you wanna take a break, I can go get my budget.
What's that?
Eight hundred ninety-three, seven, twenty-one.
Where at, Valerie?
I don't have my budget.
Background page.
Eight hundred ninety-three thousand.
Right there.
Okay. What we was, we're looking at is eight hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. Our total budget this year is thirty-five million with the, after the election. Is that correct, Lisa? The total budget?
Total budget is about thirty-five million, yes.
How much?
About thirty-five million. I don't have that number. I need to get my budget document from my-
I always thought it was about thirty-five million for the total, for the budget for the year.
Would you like me to go get my budget document, sir?
Just real fast.
I think if you include the things that are excluded, it's about forty-five million.
Is it forty-five million? But you take a look at what we charge is, is for a levy here in Florence and that's not even a very high percentage off of the property tax. What's that?
Budget.
Okay, here's the budget. Our budget's forty-five million, so you take a look at, we're not even raising a million dollars off of property tax. We're using our money, your money, to the best we can to make sure that we can get all the services that we need townwide. The eight hundred thousand dollars, like I say, is not a lot. If you looked in the paper, you saw where Coolidge has went out and asked for the max of what they could get next year. Uh, we only have one. Some communities have a secondary tax on top of that, on top of their primary property tax. So I think we're doing a pretty good job of keeping it down. Now if your property value rises, yes, your levy will stay the same, but your property tax will go up. And again, we have no control on that. That comes out of the county assessor's office. So folks, I think on the, uh, what we're talking about, the one eleven eighty-two per one hundred, I think is a fair and equitable price for the citizens of Florence. Is there any other comment?
I'd like to make a comment. Uh, the tax levy itself, that money goes into the general fund that pays, helps pay for your police, your fire, um, all of your general government expenditures. And, uh, it is a very small amount in comparison to the budget. You're only allowed by state law to increase at two percent the actual levy from one year. There's a state cap on it. So if you're looking at a hundred thousand dollar home, uh, the current levy that we have based on the rate will only increase your property taxes by two dollars and that's a very small amount of money um, for a hundred thousand dollar home. It does though contribute to the general fund to pay for all of those services that we need to, um, for our police, fire and general government.
Any other?
Yeah, I'd like to point, point out that we are running a deficit in the, uh, forecasted budget of one point two million dollars. So we're gonna have to either increase revenues or cut expenditures or a combination of both. So I don't want to say that we won't, won't raise taxes. We may have to.
Yeah, waiting for Lisa to come back. I already got it, Lisa. Sorry. Kara had it.
I will bring my documents with me next time. Be prepared. I apologize.
Okay, at this time, uh, does any member of the public have anything? Seeing no movement, I'll close the public hearing. Need a motion?
Make a motion to pass ordinance number six, thirty, dash, fifteen, adopting a property tax levy, levy in the amount of one dollar, uh, one point, one, one, eight, two dollar per one hundred net assessed valuation for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen.
Mayor, that's what we'll be adopting at the meeting of July twenty-seventh. Right now, what we're looking for is we're looking for a motion to place this item on the agenda. What we'd like to do is we'd like to consider a levy increase property tax on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteenth. You're only gonna be placing this item on a future agenda by motion.
You're looking at the last, uh-
Okay.
-two sentences of a new business item, nine A?
I'll correct that. It, uh-
This is what she wanted.
On your radio. Okay, I'll re, I'll reword that. I move that we open the tax, truth in taxation public hearing to receive citizen comments on the town's property tax levy.
Bill?
Here, who wanted to do? We need to make a motion to put it to on the agenda.
That's not how it's written. Somebody else do it.
Valerie, you'd like to make a motion?
So this is very confusing because if you look at your motion-
I, I, I realize- I'll make a motion, Lisa. I'll make a motion to put ordinance number six, thirty, dash, fifteen PH on tax levy on the July twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I repeat the motion, please?
We are going to put ordinance, ordinance, we're gonna put a, we're gonna put the adoption of ordinance number six, three, zero, dash, fifteen on the July twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen for action.
Any other discussion? Everybody understand? Okay, call for the question. We're gonna have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Walter, or I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gleene?
Aye.
Mayor Rankin?
Aye.
Motion's carried.
Motion passes.
Item B, public hearing to receive citizen comments on the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen budget and for discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution number one, five, two, eight, dash, fifteen. A resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen.
Senior member of the council, before I open the public hearing, have any questions to Lisa? Okay, at this time I open the public hearing to receive citizen comments on our budget for this next coming year. Does any citizen have any comment? Like the job we're doing? Public hearing closed. Need a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution fifteen, twenty-eight, dash, fifteen. A resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twelve, or fifteen, twenty-eight, dash, one, five. Any other discussion? Roll call for roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Gleene?
Aye.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
No changes were made, so still nay.
Mayor Rankin?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Motion carries.
Item C, discussion approval, disapproval of entering into an employment agreement with Cliff L. Matisse for the position of a town attorney. Um, employment agreements have been passed out and are available to the public, for public records.
We have before us a contract with the employment agreement with, uh, where am I at? Cliff Matisse. Does any member of the council have any comment or anything they'd like to say? If not, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve entry into an employment agreement with Clifford Matisse for the position of town attorney.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to enter into contract for employment, employment agreement with Clifford Matisse for town attorney. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item D, discussion approval, disapproval of entering into a separation agreement and the terms thereof with the town manager. Again, this item is now public and we have passed out copies to the council.
I need a motion?
I make a motion, uh, that we approve the severance agreement, release of all claims agreement with the town manager.
Roll call vote.
Second.
There's a motion, second, Valerie, second it.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yay.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Did you say Wall?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Abstain.
Councilmember Gleene?
Yes.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Nay.
Mayor Rankin?
No.
Motion carries.
Item E, discussion approval, disapproval of appointing an interim town manager.
Well, I lost my, I lost my place.
Discussion purposes, I can start while you're looking. One of my concerns is, um, you know, finances within finding that position and how that's going to impact our budget. So when we're looking at an interim, we need to take that into consideration, especially in how we're moving forward from there.
If I may, I'd like to make a motion. Now I know it's unusual for the chair to make a motion, but I'd like to appoint our town clerk, our de, our town clerk as interim manager, bringing this back for discussion within a two-week period to determine how we are gonna select a new manager.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, here we go again.
Are we going back to the facilities?
We're going into executive session this time on the motion.
Do we need to go back to the Community Facilities District?
Are we going back to item number ten?
If you're having an executive session as the facility district, you have to be in the facility district meeting to hold that executive session.
Considering we have people here as well, do you want to do a call to the, because we're not, when we come back, we're adjourning. Do you wanna give the people a chance to say anything if they have any call to the public at this time? Other than having a wait?
I'll tell you what we're gonna do. Before we go into that, we will open up, call to the public once more. Uh, same rules apply. Before we, we are going back into two executive sessions before we adjourn. Does any member of the public have anything they'd like to say at this time? Hearing none, I'll call, call to the public. We need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One and Two Board.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District One and Two Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.